I believe this is to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice in common.
The rules of procedure adopted annually to ensure productive meeting. Select board meetings are in the public, not of the public, meaning that the members of the public in attendance are entitled to the opportunity to comment, but the purpose of the meeting is for the board to be able to effectively and efficiently conduct the necessary business to govern the town. All questions and comments are to be directed to the chair, and the rules of procedure indicate that there will only be two minutes allotted for comment from any single person on any single topic. The rules of procedure are posted in the town hall and available for everyone to review. Good evening.
So we have all of our board members here tonight. We have Bob, Mike, Jessica, Tom, and Rich, and I'm Kristen. I've got everybody here signed in, and I have no additions or deletions. I know older and French business, we're going to be talking about the MRR proposals, right?
It should be. I'm assuming that we have some things to look at.
Right. So that's not, I just, I know that'll be on there, but other than that...
And I'll have an update on the Volbret grant also, dear folks.
But other than that, I have nothing to add or delete.
They're behind us. Those two went out.
Those two went out.
Oh, good. Okay. So we've got two. Perfect.
I was like, I hope we have two.
It would make things really short if we didn't have any. All right. So the minutes that need approval are from our last meeting, which was June 10th.
I'll move through those minutes.
Thank you.
I'll make that second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carrie?
Okay. And then before we get into pre-requested, so this is our talking stick microphone for Peg TV. So you won't hear yourself project through it, but if you speak this evening, please speak into it. You have to flip it on. And then a request from Peg TV is to actually talk into it like this, because sometimes we use it as like something to express our point, but you've got to talk into it to have it be effective. So... Yes, you have to talk into the talking stick, like this. Okay. So with that being said, Jennifer, you get to, you get to use it first.
Yay. So what about them telling you to talk over to the...
It's on. Yeah, they're on.
So I'm here. It's sort of about, it's about John Lavis, but not in a town health officer sort of way. So over the past almost two years now, his activities have required multiple interventions by the Pollet Constable, the Vermont State Police, the West Pollet Volunteer Fire Department, myself, and Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation. I've done my best to keep you informed, but what hasn't been talked about is the impact that all of this has had on the people that live near him, his neighbors. I've encouraged them to come to a select board meeting, but many of them are afraid to come and be public because of their fear of retaliation. So they've written a letter anonymously, and they asked me to forward it to via email, but I have my suspicions that you guys don't actually read the emails that I send, so I'm here to read it to you. So this is dated June 16th. "We, a group of concerned neighbors residing near 2736 Vermont Route 153 in the village of West Pollet, write to formally bring your attention to ongoing problems with this property that we feel compromise the safety, health, and quality of life in our neighborhood. Problems have existed with this property, the owner, and numerous transient occupants regarding the distribution of drugs, high traffic, and noise since September of 2023. While some of us have spoken with former Constable Ricard, Constable Covino, and the Vermont State Police, as well as state and local health officials about this matter, we are submitting this complaint anonymously out of concern for the nature of the individuals occupying the house in question to protect ourselves and our families from potential retaliation by the property owner and occupants. Despite continuous reporting, these issues have yet to be resolved. Following a violent altercation on Friday, June 6, 2025, involving a clash between visitors and current occupants of the residence that left one man unconscious on the lawn, we felt a pressing need to address these issues formally through this letter. The unconscious man was loaded into a truck, which quickly sped away. During this altercation, a concerned neighbor contacted Constable Covino, followed by the VSP when it was discovered Constable Covino was out of town. The VSP arrived three hours later, only to find the occupants of the house had already fled. They spoke with the neighbor who reported the incident, and a report was filed." So for background history, in November 2023, at approximately 2:00 a.m., a person was observed roaming the property with a headlamp. That person lit a bonfire about four feet from the side entrance door. An alarmed neighbor called the West Pollet Fire Department, which responded. The fire department ordered the fire to be extinguished and spoke to the person who lit it, instructing him not to light any more fires. Various open burn fires continued throughout the past 18 months by the property's barn at various hours of the night and early morning. In March 2024, a truck hauling a utility trailer arrived, loaded with mounds of bagged garbage. The garbage was unloaded onto pallets behind the house and covered with tarps. This garbage pile grew with additional garbage bags regularly thrown on top for the next month. During this time, a complaint was made to the Town of Pollet Health Officer who spoke with the owner. The owner promised not to burn his trash. However, in April 2025, the garbage pile was relocated from behind the house to the barn area where fires were subsequently lit, emitting a putrid smelling smoke, and I sent you guys a video of that. On April 29, 25, a neighbor submitted a formal complaint to the State Department of Environmental Conservation, Environmental Compliance Division, regarding this ongoing issue. Currently, Pollet Health Officer Jennifer Sullivan and Patrick Loakes from the Vermont DEC have diligently monitored the burning of trash, conducted site visits, and instructed the owner to remove the accumulated trash within a two-week period. The owner has been in continuous contact with Mr. Loakes and is currently waiting on, or working on cleaning up the garbage. Patrick Loakes is terrible at responding to my texts asking him for an update, so I don't, I don't know the status of that. But for a long time, we didn't even have John's phone number, so the fact that we even have that now and that Patrick's communicating with him is somewhat of an improvement. So impact on the neighborhood. The consequences of these concerns are significant. Excessive visitor traffic and concerning behavior suggests potential illegal activities, including the distribution and consumption of controlled substances. Frequent loud altercations and disturbances have created an atmosphere of unease for nearby residents. Frequent late-night, early-morning activity is highly disruptive, given the close proximity of homes in this neighborhood. This involves individuals walking the subject property with flashlights, loading and unloading trucks, working on vehicles, chopping wood, and loud traffic coming and going. Beyond disturbing residents' sleep, these activities contribute to unease and concern within the community. And I will just say that John is now cutting firewood to sell. He has cut down two or three trees on neighboring property without even looking into whether or not it was his property. We feel it is a shared responsibility formally notify the Town of Pollet about these ongoing concerns that have far-reaching implications for public safety and the quality of life in West Pollet. This property stands as a symbol of disregard for the collective well-being of our community. We respectfully urge the select board to conduct an in-depth investigation into the activities at this property. Since these are longstanding and complex issues with the owner, we hope to see a timely resolution to the problems that exist. We ask that our anonymity is respected. Our decision to report these concerns stems from a genuine commitment to safeguarding our neighborhood, accompanied by a heightened concern of retaliation. We trust the select board will handle this matter with the discretion and seriousness it demands. Thank you for your attention and commitment to serving our town. Sincerely, eight concerned West Pollet neighbors."
Does anybody have any comments about the letter?
In my last keynote, I asked about maybe discussing it with Merrill Vett, but I didn't get a response to that, so that's just something to consider.
Could I have a copy of that letter, please?
Sure.
Electronically, I would prefer if that's available, or...
Sorry, did I miss?
Maybe if you have that, we can scan it or something.
That's what I was gonna ask, Mike. If we could get a copy of that to do...
And then we can work from there to see what's in our realm that we can do that isn't already being done by the appropriate channels.
The VSP, I mean, they, until, I mean, the last time I talked with her, there's really not been anything. And like, that day that she talked about when the VSP showed up three hours later, they told her to call. There were a couple of things. If things happen, call, and she called, and nothing happened. So... I felt like...
A lot of the, a lot of the events that are going on there sound more like police-involved events, nothing that the town has any jurisdiction or can do anything about anyways. So it's very unfortunate for everyone concerned that, that we're not getting the support from the state officials that have the most power to do anything about this.
Tom's been, he's been great. He's been very involved. He's been very helpful, very professional, so I will say that.
And haven't we also, didn't we officially contract with, with another officer as well for to like fill in if Tom can't, basically?
That's Bill, Bill Humphries.
The stabular is aware of what's going on?
Yeah.
Any information that comes in, is being processed and passed on?
And at this point, there's really not much more we can do about this. Everything is, you know, there's nothing, there's no evidence that there's actual drug trafficking going on, so we can't just assume that there is. And, and the other, the other issues, coming and going from your house, whether you have company or not, it's, you know, that's, that's, there's no easy way to, to draw any lines on that, you know? Some people, some people work night shift, so they'd be leaving in the middle of the night, so we can't, you know, it's not like a gated community, unfortunately, but...
Yeah, I did, because John is not living there in the house regularly. He has, there's another couple that's living there, which makes it a rental. So because of that, I have referred it for an inspection by the, the Fire Safety Department of the state to, to come and do an inspection, which I'm quite sure it will fail. But again, you know, what do you do? I, I feel for the neighbors. It's, it's, you know, it's ongoing, even like people across the street, because you know its driveway is up, so people gunning the, you know, put head in the gas pedal to get up the driveway is loud.
It does seem like if someone has cut down trees on someone else's property, that ought to be something that people can sue about. I mean, isn't it theft to cut down someone else's tree?
It's all, yeah, it's all...
But, you know, you can't...
It's all similar that the police, law enforcement would deal with.
Yeah. And the house is in foreclosure, as far as I know, but the mortgage keeps getting sold. So it's not consistent one entity, but I know a neighbor has let them know, you know, supposedly the agreement was that they would let him stay there if he worked on the house and got it in better shape than it's been, and, you know? So she's written, she's emailed them.
Well, we'll take that letter. We'll share it with everyone, and, and we'll review it and see, see if there's anything other that, that can be done within our realms of jurisdiction.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Maggie O'Brien.
Yeah. Hi. Good evening. Thank you so much for having me. So for those of you who don't know me, Maggie O'Brien, typically I'm the emergency management planner for the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, but since my coworker Jeremy Gildrean has left, I've taken over on the MRR program. So earlier this month, Jessica was kind enough to walk some of our contractors, potential contractors, through the, through the pre-bid meetings, which was touring this building and the library next door. And before that, I had helped develop the request for proposals for the Town of Pollet, and I will continue to offer grant admin support through the agreement between the RRPC and the town. So I'm here tonight for the bid opening, and obviously, of course, it's up to the town in the end who you want to award the grant to, but I did want to pass on some reminders about priorities set through Act 172. So if, let's say, one of the bids you open tonight is greater than what will cover the entirety of the scope, then you will have to make some choices based on the prioritization that's set out in Act 172. So the first priority in that act is that the building envelope is addressed in terms of just making sure those emissions no longer escape. That is the first logical step in taking care of building efficiency. So that would be air sealing and insulation measures, and then fuel switching and HVAC is the second priority. So the replacement of a space heating system with a more efficient or renewable system, adding air conditioning capability to a building, and so on. And then lighting and other mechanicals. So this mainly involves upgrading existing lighting to LEDs and installing and calibrating building control systems. Ventilation is fourth priority, which mainly involves the installation of an energy recovery ventilator and any accompanying ductwork. And then last among these is the renewable energy measures, such as installing EV chargers, if there's anything to do with solar, that type of thing. So this is something that's important to keep in mind as you're looking at the bids. Now, I've also been working with the towns of Benson and, Benson and West Haven on the same thing for their MRR grant awards, and I had a chance to look at the bids that were opened last night and this morning, respectively. And I'm very impressed with what I saw. I will, I will say that. They were well either under budget or exactly at budget, very professional work. And it is the same contractors who attended all of these mandatory pre-bid meetings, so my guess is that the two envelopes in the back there will be from the two that I read from this morning as well. And I'm here to offer my assistance in case you're reading through everything and you have any questions, or you need my help to point back to legislation, anything like that. So I wanted to offer that as well. I made a sort of dichotomous key to help guide you in your decision-making. If you don't see an obvious answer and you feel like you need to weigh your choices, this kind of walks you through like a logical thinking pattern of, okay, so first of all, is this a bid that can cover as much as possible versus one item? And if the building requires IDA improvements, is it capped at 20%? Is the contingency capped at 10% and so forth? So really just hitting all of those checkmarks that is required through the contract with BGS as well as Act 172. So I offered that as a resource. You don't necessarily have to use it, but I'm a visual person. I thought it would be helpful to have on hand, so I'm happy to share that with the board, but... And certainly, you don't have to make a decision tonight. I would assume you would want some time to read through the bids and think through them, and maybe make a decision at your next select board meeting on who to award the bid to. But in the meantime, I'm here with any questions. Jessica's been a great communication with us, and I hope to, you know, continue that relationship as we move forward. And yeah, that's pretty much what I have for you tonight.
Great. Anybody have any questions at this point?
All right. I guess we'll do that sooner than later. Here they are. We have... I'll open this one. All right. This bid is from John Turner Consulting, and it's three little binders here. And this one is from Architend LLC. Those are the two we were expecting, right? And this is, oh, it looks like they've given, are these each the same thing?
They are, and Shelley had reached out to me. She's the owner of Architend and asked how many copies should be printed out, and I requested she printed out an extra copy for me to have on hand, and I know you only have three spiral-bound books, but I'm hoping I could have one of those as well, potentially. You could always scan me a copy if that would be easier, but thank you.
We'll make sure you get one of these spirals.
I'm just curious. Obviously, we can't read the whole thing just yet, but I'm curious to see their top-line numbers.
So I will say that when I looked at the bid from JTC for Benson, they, the cost value ended up being a lot lower, and the reason for that being they have a more flexible, how they determine the budget is more flexible and based on what they find out through their design and scoping. Whereas Architend has someone, all points construction, someone on hand to provide those cost estimates as they do them, so they have a better idea of what the final budget is at the end. So that might be something to keep in mind when you're comparing the two proposals as well.
Okay. So it, it's looking to me like John Turner here only doesn't have the construction numbers in there. It's just for, for project management.
Correct. Yes.
And their project management, and so, so that's on page eight of the ring binder. And then I'm finding here on page seven of the other one is their scope of the project. So they've got it, do you, would you mind, are you able to come up here and look over my shoulder?
Yes, if I'm allowed up there.
Yeah, it's fine with me.
Please do.
Yeah, so that you can just make sure that we're comparing apples to apples here. The second goes to page seven. So this is their, this is Architend's. And so this architectural and engineering fees that they've got here is comparable to what we see here?
Uh, yes, that would be correct.
Okay.
So those are the soft costs, which are capped. In the application, they were capped at 20%, but recall that 5% of that was taken out to pay for our grant administration with the town, so... And they, it looks like they took that into account in their proposal.
Okay. And so this firm has also made an estimated construction cost, whereas this firm has not given us an estimated construction cost. At least I don't see why.
Yeah, so the construction costs, and I think it's explained on the page opposite of that table, is something that they develop as they're doing the design.
Okay.
Just so that they're, my understanding of it was that they do it so that it's based on more concrete deliverables and evidence versus just speculation before they get into the project.
Right. So as we read through these, what are the, what would be the points that you would suggest we should really sort of hone in on? I mean, we've got their qualification statement here. I'm just gonna assume that both of them are, I mean, I'll read it through, but I'm gonna assume they're both very qualified.
Yes. So Architend has actually worked with several towns in Addison County for MRR before, doing this type of work. It was noted by the contractors while they were here that they felt the Level 1 Veru Veritas assessments were incomplete, and that they wanted to do them over again, so that is included for consideration as well. But clearly, they've done this work before for other towns, and they're more than capable of doing it for Pollet.
So I see that we've got here, they've got their approach, what, so exactly what they would do, what they would do during the construction phase. And John Turner has given us a timeline here to wrap up their stuff in early '26, so then the construction could happen later in '26. Because I know this grant has to be done by the end of '26.
Yes.
Let's see if there's a timeline in this one.
I don't think that the Architend one has a timeline or a Gantt chart like that one, but they do say they're capable of completing it by the, by the December 4 deadline that we propose in our RFP.
And here on page 12, Architend has broken down their, their total for their, their 54703 into what different elements are.
Yes. And so in this packet that I gave you folks, I broke out what those caps were for things like the soft costs and the contingency and so forth. And as in the other two proposals I looked at, it looks like they're well under that now.
Okay. I'm glad that we're giving ourselves a couple weeks to look through these. This is a, this is a good bit to read. We may need to, we may need to make copies of this one that we only got three of, so that everyone can have one. But...
So the John Turner did not give us a breakdown of what construction costs is, so...
That's correct, and the reasoning for that can be found on the page opposite to that table, which I don't have it in front of me, but it's pretty clearly spelled out why that's the case. So I guess that would be page...
Here, I'll just, page, um...
One of the...
Yeah, page one of eight. They propose the construction equipment and labor costs be determined through a subsequent competitive bidding process once they've finalized what exactly they're going to do. And I mean, honestly, no matter which one we go with, there's going to be some choices to be made about exactly which elements we do, because it's two buildings, and once we do envelope, ceiling, and HVAC upgrades for both buildings, we're gonna be at or past probably the amount of money that we've got, so...
I have a son in a high school that requires community service hours, and I would like to volunteer his time to, if each of those, if I could get one of each of those binders to come in and scan them all and send them out to you this week.
This one's ready to be scanned right now.
That would be, that would be quite hopeful. And I think we do all actually have a copy of this.
For good on this one.
Yes.
Yes, they made us a copy.
And there's one for you too, right, Maggie?
Uh, there's one from Architend's, not one from John Turner's. Okay, thank you.
I got that one. So she'll scan them, and you can send one to Maggie, too.
Do you want the other one scanned as well, so that you can look at it electronically?
Okay.
Might not hurt.
Thank you. So at this point, we basically have to review these and then work forward to, to see which one best fits our, our plan, our, our money, and stuff like that.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, I had told Maggie that I was pretty certain we would need some time to look through them, and given that their cost is fairly similar, I think it's not one of those where we can just quickly make a choice, like, oh, one came in $20,000 less, it's obvious. You know, so I'm glad that we are giving ourselves a couple weeks to look through these.
And once that award is made, obviously, that will ultimately be between the town and the contractor, but, but I just ask that you keep me in the loop on who you ultimately choose, so that I can, yeah, keep up with the grant admin when it's time to get into that, so, yeah.
I do have some questions.
Okay.
Since everyone's here, too. On this Architend, their, their numbers is based off a percentage of the fee. If I'm looking at that page 12 correctly, is that the right way to read that?
Uh, so for the different phases of the project, it looks like it's an estimated percentage for the total fee, yes.
So if the price of the cost to do the project goes up, the fee will go up. Is that a fair assumption?
Uh, so there is a 10% contingency accounted for, for the increase in construction costs over the course of the project. So that was set out by BGS for each MRR grant award. So I would hope that that 10% would capture whatever inflation occurs between now and the completion of the project.
So it already has a 10% buffer built in?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
But, and the other one, the John Turner consultant, they put a dollar for each project, and that's a fixed price. Is that the right way I read that one?
Uh, that's what it appears to be, yes.
I think, Tom, what they might be doing here is all of these add up to 100%. So, they might be, they might be just breaking out this number into what's 15% of that.
Okay. Because as I read there, it says it will not exceed that bottom number.
Yeah.
But this one here looks like it's a fixed number. And I just wanted to see if that is correctly, how I'm reading that, that other people see it.
My assumption is that both totals are fixed, but the, how, how much money is spent to get there in the different phases is gonna differ between companies.
Okay.
Again, with the caveat that they don't have the construction costs in there because they're going to, you know, get more final numbers on that as they go through the design and scoping process.
That answers my question, thank you.
Any other questions I can help answer at this moment?
I think we've got our work cut out for us. Thank you for organizing all this for us and helping us through this process, just take part of this process.
Yes, my pleasure.
Great, thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight too.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, I have a question quick. You're gonna be really busy on the regional plan in the next three weeks.
Yes, sidebar. It's highly inappropriate, sidebar, no, pardon.
Yes, please keep the questions directed to the reason she's here, Frank, thank you. Any announcements? Reports, zoning administrator.
Um, Nancy sent an email. She attended the DRB meeting for a conditional use permit on the 16th of June and the planning commission meeting on the 17th reviewing the Rutland Regional Plan. And there have been 25 permits issued year-to-date which have been emailed out to all of you and are posted here in the town hall.
Great.
And I have no report from the planning commission. And James is here for the highway.
Thank you. Pull that real quick.
You're good. Oh, you need to pull it up?
Yeah.
Go for it.
Yeah.
Want me to print it out for you? Or you've got it?
Yeah, it's nice. Sorry.
No worries, let's see.
Did you remember how to do it, Tom? I'll print from your phone.
Yeah, Tom, can you print that out?
Nope. Someone didn't teach me, they just did it.
Yeah.
So, you just hand them and say thank you.
That's how you do it, yeah.
That's delegation.
That's right.
Cooperation, right?
Yes, that's a better word, teamwork.
Yeah.
Teaching them to fish or giving them a fish or something.
Right.
Yeah, I starved after that meal. I did learn how to fish.
Became dependent upon my fishing skills.
My kids laughed at me.
Is it going?
We could've done that, Dad, if you had a printer at the right house. Am I getting a printer?
Hey. Hello, everybody.
Hello, Jay Daniel.
Hello. So, last two weeks, what we've accomplished, ditching on Kelly Hill, Kelly Hill Road. We graded Brimstone Road as well as added gravel to heighten it. We've been dealing with this clogged culvert there, so we've been dealing with that. That's what kinda drove the maintenance out on Brimstone Road. Took care of a downed tree on Wait Hill Road. Conducted maintenance on all equipments and trucks, road inventory as well. Mike was on leave. We mowed North Pollitt Road, River Road, 153, Townsley Hill Road, Harro Brook Road. Again, unclogged culverts on Brimstone. In the next two weeks here, we'll start Bauer Road project, culvert replacement and underdrain. We fixed, or, yeah, we, Brimstone Road is complete, culvert end, armored the bank. And we'll continue mowing rest of the roads, another pass. Also, we'll assist with the West Pollitt Rail Trail project.
Oh, yeah, Jay, James was nice enough to go with me to the spot where the picnic bench is and the, and the other bench, and we looked over it. And he says the road crew can cut down, because that sumac is coming back up. So, he says the road crew can cut it down and then put in some fill in that area to let cover over where the, where the sumac was.
Gosh, tuned it up a little bit.
Yeah, which I appreciate a great deal. And I did mention to him that when we were talking about this last fall, you had volunteered the road crew to put in a little concrete when we get that bike repair station. So, I told him you volunteered.
Yeah, you inherited that project.
That's awesome, that's awesome, hello.
That project is going a little slower than we thought it would because we have to coordinate with Rupert. But we'll talk about that in Old Business.
So, if next week works for you, if that's all right, we start doing...
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, cool.
That works great.
Yeah, continue mowing, it's gonna take a minute. And then, just some proposed projects that I just talked to Rich about earlier on. We have a critical one on, I don't know, I put the wrong... Dambie Pollitt Road up there, it's sinking, the pavement, you can see it. And then, proposed a repave Bullfrog Hollow, fix the base and all that. This is, yep, and that's it, that's all I got.
James, there is a frost heave sign over by the end of River Road on 153 next to Cole Bridge.
Yep, okay, yeah.
Would you mind pulling that down?
I can, yeah, now that I think of that, yeah, probably don't need it today. So, yeah, I take any questions, if anyone's got any questions, concerns, or comments.
One of the things that I'm just thinking that we need to kinda remember is that when we, we have the grant for paving 153 from the Monument North, correct?
We can choose wherever we wanna, we wanna pave. I haven't heard confirmation that we have gotten that yet.
So, the last, the last communication that I've received on that is that it's been recommended that we receive it. So, we are, we got an email from Patrick that said, "We're getting it, but we have to wait until we get the actual grant agreement that tells us how much we're getting." So, once we have that money, then my, from, the way that my mind remembers the process, which could be way off-base, but I'm pretty sure that then we put out a request for bids. And then, that will sort of determine how much space we're able to conquer.
Yeah.
Because the, when we submitted the grant application, we told them this is like our dream. And when you apply for that grant, they want you to apply for the maximum amount, which is $200,000. And then, at the end of the day, they determine how much is in the pot for how many people apply.
So, I'm dreaming big, but...
No, it's good, we can...
Our intention is to like start at the monument and go up through in the village?
Yeah, to where it ended there, I think, right in the corner.
So, what I'm, what I'm just trying to keep in mind is that in past years, everything kinda got rushed, and we didn't always get the risers on all the manholes for the sewer system
Yep.
in place. And I just wanna keep that.
Yeah.
Keep us thinking about that to make sure that when we do pave it, we get all the risers in. And because we lost a couple of manholes, and I think they found one with a miller when they were up by the Catholic church, so.
I, I did have a question, that's all right, it's more kind of a technical, but...
Absolutely.
It, it's, it's not like, are they milling down and then taking recycling, or it's new?
Overlays.
Overlays, okay. So, it's not like a shim, it's a white line to white line, okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Frank?
So, that's from the monument south or...
North.
The monument back towards Route 30.
Route 30, so that's, because the other part is, it's over the sidewalk.
Frank, you gotta take the microphone.
Yeah, the other part to the south.
We're going, we're going north.
So, you wouldn't need to worry about the sidewalks there because it's a different story going up the hill.
Sue?
Um, I was just wondering when Rupert Hill Road, the, by the bridge that we love, there's sumac starting to grow up, so it's hard to see when people are coming on the other, coming down the hill across the bridge, and if you're going from the village across the bridge, there's root bomb sumac growing up, so you can't see around the curve there when people are coming this way.
Okay. Are you familiar with that area?
Yeah, we, as everyone else, like...
Knows, like, that's why we're trying to get as many passes in. Like, we're just trying to get our first passes all the way around all the roads. And then, you know, like that, that knotweed stuff doesn't cut, it just lays right down. So, we are doing, extending our reach as far as we can with the mowing, but just trying to get the first passes done. I just prioritize the pavement roads first, just 'cause... Oh, yeah, no, no, I, I really appreciate the, yeah. So, I just, just trying to explain my concept, like...
Yeah?
Yeah.
Well, that makes perfect sense, so. It's, it's gonna happen, and they extend on sticky, going wider. But we're doing the basics and then, as time permits and the opportunity.
I didn't know if somebody who didn't drive it on the dance, you'd notice that part of that stuff. When you do drive it, okay.
What else we got going on, anything? The bullfrog, did, did we talk about the bullfrog, the end of the bullfrog a little bit, or?
Yeah, so that's an upcoming...
Is it just, it's still in conversation, and we're trying to come up with a better plan, or?
Monday of next week, we're gonna meet with, meet with them and look, look it over and see what the best plan of attack is for that.
Okay.
Because that is the town's responsibility, because...
That's correct.
Yeah, so, that's my, that's my bad misunderstanding, because I thought it was just like a easterly off the state road. So, I just thought, there right away, I didn't, I didn't really realize how far that paving goes to.
How it reached out, yeah. Okay. No, that's under, yes, that's good. So, you guys have a plan, you're working forward with it, and it's just, it was brought up, so I just don't wanna think we dropped it or anything like that, so.
And if, if we do determine that, just an overlay, you know, fix the base, whether we dig it up, put gravel back, and then put an overlay, that's something we can include in the, the price, if we do get the grant. When we put it out to bids, we can include that. I know a lot of times when we put it out to bid, we have special little projects we have them do. So, we can include that if we decide that that's what needs to happen there.
I'm not sure, not for the grant portion, not for like the grant funded...
No, but while they're here, they give you a deal on doing little...
Yeah, okay, I misunderstood.
Like we did the little bridge over on North Pollitt Road.
Yes.
You know, while all their equipment's here, they do that stuff at every...
I have to do a couple other projects on us, not portion of the grant, okay. That's good clarification.
So, I, I had a little bit of a question about the paving through West Pollitt, because I had heard from at least one person who lives in West Pollitt, and I think it is in the bit that would be paved, that because the road is so high, the water runs off of it into their yard. So, I don't know, because you were talking about whether we would mill it down or we would just go on top of it. And if we keep going on top of it, doesn't the road just sort of keep going up and up and up?
It does, but...
Which is, which is ideal for the road, for the longevity of the road. If you have sidewalks, it's an issue. As far as lawns go, you do not want the water running from the lawn onto the road. If anything, you do want your road higher than, than the shoulders or the lawns.
Okay.
But like what Frank is talking about in West Pollitt, unless we repour the sidewalks, they're, the road now has been paved so many times that it's either level or above.
So, at this deep, from my, my recollection as a kid.
So, in a case like that, you need to go through and mill it really before you put much more on top of it.
Now, it turns out it's quite a lot more expense.
Right.
Frank?
Yeah, the, some of the water on some of the houses on the west side, when the water goes down, slants off, is encroaching into the houses. And it's, the people have been trying to manage it. But when you have a big dump, it's, it's a pain for them, and... That sounds like a shoulder issue. Now, what are you talking about? Uh, James is where Burdick's used to live, Harold Burdick, Bobby Burdick lived there for years. Okay. Next to Woods's house. And then, the place next door, she's having problems with water coming in.
I heard from Maureen Brown, and I think she lives in that same area.
No. Maureen lives out by the quarries north.
Okay. Well, she said the water keeps going in her backyard really deep, so...
It's always gone in her backyard really deep forever.
Doesn't come from the road either.
Okay. Well, she's got a pot in the community garden now, so she can garden, because she can't garden her yard, so.
I pumped water out of that cellar when it was that far from the meter box when I was just a teenager. It's bad, that whole area gets flooded from all the way up, because it's all big swamp out back of that, all that. Okay. I guess we're all set with James? Thank you for joining us tonight, James.
Thanks, James.
Assessors, anything from the assessors? Anything from Deb? Julie?
Hi, two warrants this week, payroll and accounts payable. Payroll's 12-6-64-92, and the warrant number is 25077. Accounts payable is 37-7-80-88, and the warrant number is 25078. The breakdown of that is general fund, $21,931.93. Highway fund, $10,179.17. Waste water fund money is $5,669.78. I finished the fiscal year '25 reporting on the MERC mini-grant. I'm working on finalizing the report for the fiscal year '25 Better Back Roads grant. I do have that there for you to sign, Mike. And I also have the pay sheet for the upcoming fiscal year, which starts next week, for you to sign. And then, I have presented you with the wastewater collection breakdown. So, the amount that I turned over for the delinquent collector was $29,149.53. I didn't put this in, this report, but I did look at the last few years. Last year was about $1,000 less than this. The year before that was significantly less, like almost $10,000 less. But as I recall, that was a year when there was a big push to spend some leftover money. And so, there was a, a program that helped people with this particular utility. And I think that is the reason that it was such a big difference. I guess, other than that, we're just getting, I'm plenty busy getting ready to close the fiscal year, and I've been communicating with my auditor and trying to set up times for us to meet early in July so that we can be efficient with our time on that.
Okay. I signed that one, and I gotta sign the payroll thing. Did I, didn't I sign one and send it back to, or didn't you get it back, or?
You signed an updated, adjusted one for, we adjusted somebody's pay rate. This is for things that are effective July 1.
Okay.
And you also, Julie, sent around to us those policies that we should look at before next meeting, right?
Yes. Um, I did, and I have my copy, so we can talk about that. I, I sent them, I think, today, so I'm assuming that you guys haven't really had an opportunity to look through them, but they are electronically available, which was something that you had all requested. There's three total policies. The fraud prevention policy is pretty much straightforward, like there's not, there's not issue, like places for you to work on what adjustments you wanna make. The capitalization policy has figures that you might want to adjust. So, there's certain categories of things, like having thresholds for when you would capitalize or not capitalize based on what the, the property is, like land. They recommend 25,000, like machinery or equipment, they recommend having a $5,000 limit. So, if it's over $5,000, you would capitalize it. But I think that those are areas where you may or may not want to adjust those numbers. So, as you look at those policies that I sent you, you'll notice that those areas are highlighted in yellow so that you can find them quickly and find that. The final policy is the fund balance policy, which this is something that we had discussed when we came upon a large chunk of money sitting in our fund balance for the bridge. So, in that policy, there's two highlighted areas. There's one area in blue and one area in yellow. And so, those are the two kind of choices that you have. And basically, what it is, is you would either, so if, if the town has a fund balance that exceeds 30% of its operating budget, then you could either turn that money back over to the taxpayers by reducing taxes on the next fiscal year, or you could put that as a line item in the budget to be turned over to the capital projects fund. By putting in... Um, by putting it as a line item in the budget, it counts as voter approval to go into designated fund. I feel, just judging by this board, like the temperature that I've taken of this board, that that's probably the direction that you're gonna wanna take, but that's certainly something for you guys to think about and decide.
Anything else, Julie? That's it?
Uh, I have nothing else, just need the, the motion on, on the warrants, um, if you have, I, I just, as you look at these, reach out to me, send me an email, shoot me a text, whatever, um, you need to do to get in touch with me. I'm happy to either explain it as best I know, or seek some more expert, um, level guidance on this.
Good.
I have some questions on the capital asset form you sent out to us. I think the twenty-five thousand is more of like a canned number, you know, I mean, that, are we saying that we're only gonna capitalize twenty-five thousand for land?
No, that's your, that's your basement, not your ceiling.
Oh, okay.
That's your threshold, right?
Right. If you buy a piece of land for five thousand dollars, you wouldn't capitalize it. If you buy a piece of land for twenty-five thousand or above, you would. And you would capitalize the whole amount that you bought it for, or, or what it was valued at.
And doesn't our account, don't you have like a chart for how many years you wanna put it over?
Yes.
And that is a canned thing, I mean, is that what those numbers are your?
The, the general idea is that you capitalize something over the life of it, so land is pretty much like a canned figure, like you said, because it doesn't lose value. Um, but if you bought, um, a tractor, and you decided that the lifespan of the tractor is twenty years, it would be capitalized over twenty years, so you would take the purchase price divided by twenty, and then each year that gets depreciated, that amount gets depreciated until you come upon a time when the whole amount is depreciated.
Okay, so is this just a guide then? That you're asking us to sign off, or if we sign off on this, this is what the policy would be? Because equipment could be different, like, we were talking like trucks, the idea would be like seven years. Is that correct? To, to roll them up even though we're not doing that? And this one here says eight to fifteen. So if we were to achieve that seven-year goal, is, by signing off on this, does it give us that flexibility? I mean.
So I guess I should have highlighted that area below. I think that you, those are spots that you might wanna consider adjusting as well. Um, I specifically brought this policy to you because my auditor has been asking for it.
Okay.
Um, and this was a, an example that he sent to me that I simply just retyped, including Town of Pollitt, with those figures, but that's, um, he generally asks me, oh, you bought that, like, what does the board feel the lifespan of that is? This puts it in policy so that it is in black and white for everyone. So if you would like to change those numbers, then I think that the time to do it is now before you sign the policy.
I, I'm just asking the question so everyone can give that thought.
Yep.
So, because I don't want it to be a canned thing, and, you know, tomorrow we could have an opportunity to buy something that.
Yeah, and none of this prevents you from selling anything either, right? Like, it's just how, how the assets are accounted for in the town.
Okay.
I guess we can, like, if it's at eight to fifteen, you know, we can put in a range that we think would make sense. If we wanna make the range be like six to eighteen or something to give us self's flexibility, we could do that also.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm using the truck as an example, just to know what our, if we approve this, and we move forward with it, are we able to adjust because of an item down the road, which, I get the impression we can?
No, you wouldn't adjust how you depreciate a pro, a, a piece of equipment. You would simply sell it before it was done being depreciated.
No, but I mean, in the guide though.
Right, but all this guide is, is for how a, an asset is depreciated. So it's like, the, all of the assets of the Town of Pollitt are added up together. So if you, if you want to depreciate a truck faster, you can, but doing that doesn't make a difference on anything that you may or may not do with that asset.
Okay.
It doesn't tie your hands in any capacity, it's just about how the assets are calculated and then reported out to constituents.
So why is the accountant asking us to have this policy in place then?
Because he would like clarity on how to depreciate our assets.
So they're looking for clarification?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I think that we could, I mean, if we pass this policy now, and then like five years from now, we're like, wait a minute, we wanna make an adjustment to this policy, we can then pass a new adjusted policy.
These timeframes need to be adjusted, and we can go through and tune them as we see fit, as some, as we see it.
Right, all of your policies are in effect until such time as you decide to amend them or, uh, or void them.
Good.
Annually, if you want it.
So did that answer your question, Scott?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ed Sumpin.
Yeah, I was, I was saying, most likely, because the select board is elected to do whatever they want, when you want, that you could change the policies literally at will, annually, every two years, three years, whenever you, or when the numbers just aren't matching up and you just need an adjustment to it, such as if there was two, several tax years in a row, or there's extra money coming in, uh, versus what's going out, and instead of it all going into the capital fund, you could make the change to that policy, am I correct with that, Julie? That last point you made in your initial presentation.
It could be changed.
Could be changed.
It could be changed, yeah.
Could be changed, right, so you can do what you want, you're just establishing it for the good of the paperwork.
Thank you, Frank. Motion for, oh, James?
I just had a question about like, so like, equipment-wise, like, money we put into repairs and stuff, how, does that factor into depreciation? In the va, it doesn't, okay, okay.
Sometimes an engine, an engine or some, a major component like that could, could, but your everyday stuff.
Things that you, like, if you spent, um, if you spent at or above your threshold on something that improved the value of the asset, then that would be depreciated. If you spent that or above at maintaining your asset at the current value, it doesn't get depreciated.
Okay.
Um, I can make the motion for the warrants, um, and we approved payroll warrant two, five, zero, seven, seven, and accounts payable warrant two, five, zero, seventy-eight.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried. Any other questions for Julie? Thank you, Julie. Emergency management director?
Let's send the warrants.
Oh, yeah. Facilities. Our towns are all kinds of cool stuff.
Well, I think I just found a solution for our windows tonight, though. I sent the board out an email earlier, and I'll be more glad to share it here at the scene tonight. Really what I wanted y'all to do is put your thinking caps on, as you can see that there is quite a few other items that we need to address. Um, excuse me for a second. Sue, we met.
Oh, sorry, I thought you said Sue.
Yeah, Sue was gonna meet with us, but she had an appointment that day, so. You're good, Sue, didn't mean to wake you up. Um, we did a walk-around, uh, we were hoping that, uh, Sue and Cory was gonna join, uh, and Jessica was gonna join, just more eyes. We did, we came over here a couple weeks ago, ten days ago, and did a walk-around, and, uh, Julie and Deb were my guests as they gave, or I was their guest when they gave me the tour of the buildings. Uh, what we stumbled onto is, this all started with the exterior of the library in the town hall being, uh, certain sections being updated and painted, uh, which turned into, we found some rotten boards, we found a dirty deck out back, uh, we found broken windows, as I wrote in the email. Uh, and there's stones starting to fall out of the ramp out back behind the library and the rail's loops. Uh, we also have some roof repairs on this lower roof over here, where the flashing's coming up, where it attaches to the building. So we need to get a roofer again, we need to get a carpenter to fix these rotten boards before we go into looking at painting. We also need to look at, and I think I just found it here to my right tonight, window repairs. That could maybe fall under part of that grant.
Yeah, I, I would say the windows and, and the ramp.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the ramp, it has, because twenty percent of the grant can be used for ADA compliance.
Perfect.
So I think that we should hold off on the windows and the ramp to fold that into the grant if possible.
So is that part of the stairs too, then?
I'm not sure.
DEA, maybe.
I mean, if it makes it more accessible.
Well, it is.
It could be.
It is part of accessibility getting in and out if the stairs aren't solid.
We might wanna wait till we've hired the contractor and talk to them about that.
Okay.
And see if they think that could be folded into the grant, but I'm certain the windows could.
Sue, it, I just wanna take a look at my note here and just make sure that the front door of the library, if you look at the library to the right, it looks like the over roof is leaking, and that's what's creating all the rot to the right side of that, uh, walk-in entrance to the library. Uh, that's where I'm thinking that we need to have a roof repaired. And then as you come around, we had the broken windows down at the first floor and the cellar in that right-hand corner, and then as you go around the building, uh, that mortar that you put as a coating on the side of the wall is starting to come out where the moisture is on the beds are out back. Just over time, that breaks apart, wears down. Uh, and then the roof in the back, the flashing on that roof on the library too is coming up off where it attaches to the slate on the backside of the lower roof. Um, and then, so if we could look at doing the stairs and the rail and the steps, and we really just need to find a good contractor that can replace our boards on both buildings that are rotting. We do have a couple out here on the backside of this, uh, kinda I would say in a flashing area. Maybe the board behind them are rotted too, but without putting a ladder, I don't know, you really don't know. Uh, and then the boards to this porch over here on the left-hand side, as you walk in to go to the elevator, they're rotted right alongside the building down at the bottom, so they need to be replaced too, along with that being re, re, you know, painted, the whole thing, like you redo the boards, so. And then, of course, you can look at the other parts of the building. I mean, I guess we do spot painting, meaning that we'll choose a side of a building that, and then update it.
That's, that's what we have done in the past.
So, and, uh, that would be, we would choose, I'm thinking that this far side on this town hall is the worst.
Yeah, that's the one that Meg Campbell was pointing out that would need to be done first.
Yep, so that would be mine, after you fix these other places and boards, I would touch these other places up where we replace the boards, but your biggest painting would be on that side of the building. Um, and, and whatever the deck is out front here, it should be redone too. And then, uh, now, we didn't go inside the library, was there anything inside the library I needed to look at, Sue? And you guys, Gail's were taking care of.
Not that I know of, what, what do you?
I seem to remember last time they determined that was the library, still.
There, there's a question about the smell in the mat weight room downstairs, isn't it? Where there's, my, the insulation might be wanted to checked on, not old it is, and if it's off-gassing anything, that's the only concern.
That's, nothing that you're aware of, Sue?
I went down and, and sniffed and looked, and I didn't smell anything, uh, Frank did and somebody else did. It's not, I, I don't know. Um, the only things I, I know about that I, uh, the, um, town hall in the sub-basement, there's a sewer pipe uh, right on that wall, but down below the, the floor in the cellar, that probably needs some insulation on it, because remember a few years ago, that pipe, um, froze, and, um, and then none of the plumbing, uh, worked in the building. Um, and also, there may be one spot on the foster side of, um, what do you call it, foundation, that's all right. Um, one of the sto, a couple stones might be loose over there that, uh, air, air was blowing in there, and that's what probably froze that pipe, and, um, I plugged, I plugged it up myself, like, four years ago, and, uh, it's worked, but somebody should.
Excuse me.
But I don't know of anything in the library, uh, that needs doing.
So I guess we, if people could forward names to me of contractors, that would be great, that I could reach out to them and see if I could set up a time to meet with them and get some bids or proposals. Uh, and then you already gave me a name to one painting company, if other people's got a couple names to painting companies, I could, I'd take those too. Uh, the roofers, I'll reach out to those, I already got that contact, so. But I, I'd be more glad to coordinate it all once I get some names so I can do it, so that's why I sent the email to everybody.
Okay, we'll keep thinking about options.
And we do have some more good news, I think.
Yeah, the other thing we've got is that, so Will, who is making our door for us, has sent his drawings and notes to Meg Campbell from the historic, uh, from the Preservation Trust. And they had a little go-back-and-forth with some questions, and she has, just as of today, given him the official written approval to go ahead with the work.
Excellent.
So he's gonna start making the door. She, well, I think she was impressed with his thoroughness.
Good.
Yeah, he's very detailed.
Any other facilities related questions? Wastewater, I'll let you share the good news.
Oh, yeah, um, I don't have the wastewater, I, I, I know that I forwarded it to everybody, but, so our project that the Rutland Regional Planning Commission is trying to help us get the money for, um, for the, for the sludge tank, um, that we approved, that one, um, we went through and we approved which one we wanted to go for, which kind of tank. And they put in a bill-fast request for congressional-directed spending, I forget exactly what the acronym is for it, but they put it through Peter Welch's office, and so our project was one of the ones that he has recommended. Now, that doesn't mean we're gonna get it, but they're trying, they're gonna put the line item for that into the bill that they're working on, and then it has to go through like a committee and another committee and maybe be voted on, so who knows? But.
It's a step closer.
It, it cleared the first hurdle in that Peter Welch's office approved it and sent it out, so we'll see. It would be great if we got federal money for it, but I'm honestly not holding my breath given how the federal government seems like they're trying to not spend much money these days.
Okay, well, sounds like good news for us at this point, positive news.
Yeah.
Anything else, I haven't heard anything from wastewater, just the reports?
She just submitted the May reports.
Reports to the community, Metowee School Board?
I don't have a official report, we have, um, I think I reported on my last time, and then we have July off. Um, I will just say that, um, H four fifty-four did pass, and so this summer, there's going to be a commission looking at redistricting, uh, all of the districts in the state of Mon, um, working on a completely different way to raise taxes to cover education, and, um, I have, I have, I have some pretty substantial concerns. with some of the content of the bill and some of the parameters that are going to be used to redraw maps, redrawing wards to vote for how, who represents you on your school board. And I encourage everyone to pay attention to the news about education in Vermont, because my concern is that there is a lot of apathy and people are not paying attention right now. And that when it hits the fan and people realize what that actually means for their schools in their community, everyone is going to be all aflutter. And the time to be aflutter is now.
I was wondering if they established a working group around the state of different people to be working on this, and as with ad hoc people coming in. I just, do you know if that's the case?
I'm not aware of that. Does anybody know?
Because they did, they've done that before. And different people who have a significant interest and have particularly good insight on issues like this can be on those working groups if they got to contact people that they know how, will get on the group.
Nothing that I'm aware of, right? Any other questions for the Medway School District? Pollock Public Library?
Book sale, book sale, coming up July 26th and 22nd, 27th.
Okay.
So, coming by.
Good, thank you. Older unfinished business?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to, since we already did our opening the bids, I wanted to update on the Vorec Grant. That's the one that was for the amenities by the Vale Trail. So, I did, I did mention in the, in the road foreman's report about how the road crew's going to be helping us out with that project. Because Rupert took a while to get their act together about what they wanted to get for this grant as far as like benches or things. It's taken a little longer. We had hoped that we would get everything together in May or June, but we now have till September for the grant, so they gave us an extension. But what that does also mean is that say for the, for the bike rack we're going to get and for the bike repair station, since Rupert is going to get them, we can order like both at once. They are hoping that the bike repair stations can be dropped off at the highway garage. Would that be okay?
Yep.
All right, great. I don't think they've been ordered yet, but they should be ordered soon. I'll just give you a heads up when they are going to be on their way. And then all the invoices go to Julie, because Pollock is the main town for this grant, even though we're working together with Rupert. What I'm hoping that we can do is, because in the fall we had sort of a community meeting, you were there Mike, in West Pollock, and folks were talking about ideas that they wanted for that little park space. And I'm hoping that we can do that again in the next couple of weeks, maybe on like a Tuesday or Wednesday night. And, because there's a little bit of wiggle room in the grant money, so I, I kind of like to ask people if anybody is interested in like a flower plant or if there are any other little ideas that folks have for how to boost up that park. If we want to get a little sign, if we want to name it, give the park a name and put up a little sign or something. I'm not sure, but so far the things that we know for sure we're doing are the picnic table and the bench, which are already there. We're going to V-seed with grass. And the highway department's going to put down the fill before that. And we're going to get a bike rack and a bike repair station. And then we wanted to use existing slate to make like little bollards or something to keep cars from driving in there. And that's something that I'm hoping some community members who have a little experience in working with stone might give us some advice on. But I've been, so I'm hoping that we can get some community members together to decide exactly how we want it to look and if there's anything else we want to do. And then plan a volunteer day, probably on a Saturday sometime a little later this summer to make it all come together. So, that's where that's at. I did notice when I went over there that the, that's not the only picnic table in West Pollock now. There are picnic tables on the spot where the fire department tore down that building. So, we have multiple options for folks to sit at a picnic table now in West Pollock.
What is, what is the direction of people parking to get into our parking bench? Because there is a way over there.
Right, that.
They park across the street. There's the two lots for the Vale Trail. And part of this grant is that there are new signs that are going to say Vale Trail Parking.
Yep, okay, I understand the parking, but for them to get to the, to the bench and to the picnic table that's currently there, the direct route is for them to walk across someone else's yard that the town don't own?
No, the town owns that whole area. The only thing the town doesn't own is just the square around Ray Duquette's house.
Has that been surveyed? Yeah, it's part of the process.
It's part of the process to get it surveyed.
I don't know that it has been.
I don't know if it has been. I can ask, that was part of a different grant that we had. Let me make a note to ask if it had been surveyed. That was, that was the, the folks who are doing the wastewater were going to survey it. I can find out, yeah.
Part of the grant for the wastewater was to have that whole area surveyed, so we'll know exactly what footprint Ray's building takes.
Because I see where he's mowing is right up to where.
He mows all, he mows all that open space there, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. That, that, that particular parking area always went with the store, but I don't, that the curjacks always use that area there. So, I'm not a hundred percent sure where the lines exactly are, but.
Yeah, I think the confusion about where the line was wasn't on that side so much. It was on the other side to see if the line, lot line, if where the, where that basement was dug encroached on Ray's lot line at all. I think that was the concern. But yeah, they won't, they won't have to walk across Ray's lawn to get there. They can just walk in across the street and onto the little park.
Good, thank you. That's jumbo.
We looking at that?
Yeah, Bob's got a map there and it doesn't.
Just basically, we call it jumbos, the building, Ray Duquette's building. It was, we'll see when it moves, but it's basically not much more than the measurements of the building.
Much bigger than the footprint of the building.
For the driveway that goes up.
Yeah, just kind of to get around, just enough to get around back.
Very good.
One piece of older unfinished business. We have a stop sign coming in from Egg Street. And once upon a time I thought we talked about making that the right-of-way and putting a yield coming in from where the old store was.
Oh, yeah, to change that intersection?
Right.
Yeah, that was in, the idea for that was in that West Pollock master plan that we did. And Michael and I, who were working on that, talked with, man, we talked with several people. I think someone from B-Trans and someone from the Regional Planning Commission. And they were, they were pretty much down with it. I wonder if we want to do that when we do the paving?
We're not going to get in that area, but I just know.
So, is Egg Street the one that comes in from?
Right, from thirty-one.
On the hill?
So, you're stopping on a hill. And we discussed that at a meeting one time, that thought that that would make sense, that that had the right-of-way, we're coming from like Grandeway in front of the old store. You had a clear and flat area to yield to anybody coming up the hill, especially a truck or something like that.
It would probably slow traffic down a lot, so.
So, you know.
I don't know, I thought we considered a yield sign coming up Egg Street. We looked at a bunch of different options. I don't know if we ever agreed on anything.
That's, that's why I'm trying to revisit it a little bit. But it just, it just seems like coming up the hill, it'd be nice if, if they could keep going and, and, you know, yielding on the flat. It's going to take a little bit of time for people to get used to it, but that's kind of a little bit crazy at that intersection, right?
I thought there was something to do with the fact that it's, it's a town, we have to maintain that road, but it's a state road, and so the intersection, Patrick said that we would need to go through some sort of one, like one of those.
However, I don't.
I think that we have to do a traffic study.
Okay, so.
That was, I remember him saying.
We can reach out to them, but it may be far enough back from one fifty-three that, because it's on the other side of the, the rail trail.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if that, those two roads meet, merge, go across the rail trail and then onto the state road. So, I'm not really sure, so.
Combine forces on that and can reach out to Patrick and ask him about what would be required. I remember him being here one time.
So, what do you, what do you think about it?
Yeah, that makes a good point about like stopping on a hill there, so that'd be, anything's better than that.
Right.
Bob's got a good point about slow traffic down through there. Yeah.
So, that's, it was just something I've been, you know, I see it as they go through and then everything to bring it up for discussion. But it would be something that, that we could discuss and just kind of keep it in the back of our heads and if we have an opportunity to talk to the people that could guide us on that.
That's something we could definitely do during the paving, that, you know.
Okay, thank you.
If there were a traffic study done there, maybe expand the traffic study to include some of the designs that were proposed during the West Pollock study.
One step at a time, Frank, thank you.
Because that would, it's the same area, so I just, because it was all thought of as a package at the time. Thank you.
So, if you achieve that, a yield sign coming off Egg Street?
No, it would be, it would, the yield sign would be in front of the store, like.
Oh, going toward Egg Street?
Right, going toward Egg Street. Egg Street would have the right-of-way to come up the hill, not have to worry about yielding or stopping. Go directly to the, to the monument. And who was ever coming in front of the store, the sewer plant way, would have flat and plenty of vision to be able to.
And all that's going to take place a hundred and fifty feet before you even intersect one fifty-three.
Right, and I think it's far enough off one fifty-three so the state wouldn't care.
Yeah, I was thinking of something different, sorry. But yeah, that would, that would be all on town roads.
We all, we need to certainly look into it, get it all set, and I said, no, no, we can't do that.
It was like when we did the speed limit adjustment and that was.
Right, yeah.
Sue, Sue, when we're looking at that, should we be looking at a crosswalk from the parking to our new park area then too? Same thing?
Um, no.
No, we don't like crosshairs. We don't like crosshairs.
People will stop and look both ways, like we do as pedestrians in the town of Pollock.
I had a conversation, when we were talking about maybe teeing up that intersection with the B-Trans folks, that was the, the one thing the Vale Trail people said we couldn't do was putting a crosswalk.
Put a crosswalk, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, it had to do with, it had to do with their liability for the trailer.
Older unfinished business. What are we going to do with that International Dump Truck? Anybody got any ideas? Got any friends that own it?
It's been sitting there, looking like a dump truck.
Looking sad. I feel like it's not really getting any bites where it is. Maybe we should.
Should we just junk it or something?
We could try that auction international again. I mean, we did get a, you know, somebody did bid on it.
Somebody is better than nothing at this point.
And it doesn't cost us anything to do that.
Probably it makes sense.
Yeah.
Try it again and we just, maybe we just got to. Go. It, it needs to go back. It's really of no benefit, so. Frank?
Maybe a bigger sign, because when I've gone by, I don't see the for-sale sign there all the time when I'm driving by.
Yeah, but you're not keen for looking for dump trucks either.
No, but a big.
Anybody that would be interested for a dump truck could see it from the North Pollock Road.
It's a big truck.
Four by eight plywood would for-sale on it.
All right, and we'll try the auction again.
All right, that's great. James has, has a question.
So, this is, isn't back to dump truck, but I noticed like on the shop, we have two older plow bodies, or sorry, plow frames that don't go to any of the dump trucks we have now. Is that kind of, I'm trying to, I'm trying to connect the dot, like connect it to the dump truck kind of thing? Is that something we could also sell or do?
Go talk over with Rich and Bob, your liaisons, what, what you find that we don't need anymore and they'll help you come up with the best avenue to, to get rid of it, because we don't need any junk hanging around. If it's, if it's junk and it needs to be scrapped, scrapped, if there's a potential for some value we could see, but, you know, does it always even, is it always worth the extra effort to try and get five more cents out of it?
Thank you.
Julie?
Just this conversation struck a bell with me, like maybe I could reach out to VLCT about this thought if you guys would like me to, but maybe we can have a policy about selling equipment and where that money goes. Because currently like if the highway sells scrap, it goes into the highway fund.
Uh-huh.
But maybe we could have a policy that would direct it into the equipment fund.
Okay, that would be a smart, good idea. I'm, yes.
Use the money for the old truck to board the new truck.
Please do. Anything else on the newer or older unfinished business? Anything on the new business? Public comment?
Under everybody's favorite topic. I was up last week on Monday at the Secretary of State's office for one of the working group meetings for amendments to open meeting law to try and make it easier for everybody, one hundred and seventy-three towns in the state. And it's a good group. And as the meeting was finishing, the fellow there who runs, is like the expediter for the office, he told me that the Senate and the House had just passed a new amendment to the open meeting law that was all read and marked up and stuff, and it wasn't really presentable yet, but it's effective on July first. So, the Secretary of State, General Counsel has written and said, "We're working up a new guidance document for this amendment," whatever it is. I don't know what's in it. It's just a lot of stuff we're taking out of it. I know that for sure.
Thank you.
Just to piggyback on that and to ease your worried minds, all the updates so far, the VLCT has been sending things out about the open meeting law, so some of the highlights. Luckily, we already do a lot of these things, so they were, they're now requiring the posting of meeting recordings when the minutes are posted, as opposed to when the minutes are approved, which thanks to PEG TV, we already do that. They're changing the definition of undue hardship, of which I don't know what the new versus old is yet, but that's a change. They've added an exception to the law's recording requirements for non-advisory public bodies' site inspections or field visits, allowing meeting notices to be posted in a neighboring town if there are not enough public places within the municipality's borders, which is not something that we have to worry about. Require that meeting agendas include sufficient details on the specific business to be discussed and details on proposed executive session if included, which we always try to do. Adding a requirement to vote to exit executive session, not just enter it, we already do that. And allowing two allowances, or adding two allowances rather, for executive session, one being cybersecurity if it's jeopardizing public safety. So, just kind of expanding upon why boards can go into executive session. And then lastly, they're defining disturbs any lawful assembly or meeting of persons for purposes managing meetings consistent with our past guidance, which is something that had been brought up to the board a while back, I think, just trying to help to manage disruptive presence and participants of meetings. So, luckily, those are the main updates that I've gathered. And so, good news for us is we're already doing a great job. And so, I think we don't, you know, obviously more to come, but it should not impact the way we function too much, because we're already there.
All right, excellent.
More, I think that's, there's no more really to, nothing more concrete left.
The stuff that the working group's on is going to be impacting the next legislative session. We had nothing to do with any of these changes. It just came about seamlessly from one hundred and seventy-three towns having problems with it.
So, these aren't Frank's fault?
Stay tuned.
I'll make a motion. Will you adjourn?
I'll second that.
Hang on.
Tom, Alvin.
Quick question, maybe it's for you or Rich.
It's actually for me. It's actually, it's actually for me.
For you, sorry, yeah, I guess. Second Constable Doutel has asked, uh, what we can do about procuring two forty mile per hour speed limit signs by his business right there. Um, and maybe possibly a welcome to Vermont sign right at the border. He's having problems with people speeding through there, there's only one sign I think at the far end of it. So he's having people cross the road when they're doing their berry picking and such. So he'd asked if some way we can get two more signs added to that section of roadway on Button Falls.
Order them basically, right? Can you take care of working on that, James? Excellent.
I like the sign, welcome to Vermont.
You checked into it with the state and, uh, they'll only do it on, uh, major roads like Route thirty and such, so they won't provide the sign for, uh, Button Falls, so I don't know if the town will do that or not. But he's willing to put it on his property, he owns right up to the line, so.
What was the other road up here that we need to?
Oh, Red Mountain, Red Top, Red Mountain?
Red Top.
So, that was another road sign, Red Top Road?
No, no, it was Check.
No, well, there was Check, you fixed Clark.
Check Park.
Yeah, okay.
So Check Clark, so Clark is Check Clark, which we talked about last time.
Not just Check, not just Clark Road, it's Check Clark Road.
There's a, there's another road off of this road.
Red Top?
Red Top.
Yeah, but what's this one, Polla Hill?
Polla Hill.
Rupert Hill, Rupert Hill Road called Red Top Road. That, there's been no, apparently there's been no sign there for years and years and they've never had issues, but now they're having trouble receiving their Amazon packages and with like, A roads. So.
You can take care of that.
I can remind you.
Yeah.
I can send you an email.
Yeah, Check Park Road though, we haven't had a new sign yet.
Yeah, have you, have you ordered them? Okay, so we'll have to figure, we'll have to get.
Good, we got some more to add.
Figuring out, yeah, we got a list and we're.
Super mother does it.
Who we ordered those signs from and we'll, we'll get that situated for you.
Anything else?
I'm just gonna move from major, I'll second it again.
All favor?
All right.
Hold, carry? Thank you all for coming.